All right. Roll call finances. Dave on remotely?
Not yet.
All right, everyone is here then except for Dave Price, who may join us remotely. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda? All right. Approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, passed unanimously. Consent agenda, item five, six, seven, and eight.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, passed unanimously. Anyone here for open forum? Anyone online? Open forum. All right, general business. Recognition Award 2025 Transit Innovation Award. Tripspark Technologies. Dave?
Good afternoon, commissioners. So the annual Ignite User Conference, Tripspark Ignite User Conference was held April 13 through 16, 13 through 16. And I submitted an award on behalf of Metro Bus, and we were selected. So it was the Transit Innovation Award. And so it's an agency that has leveraged technology or plans to leverage technology to improve rider satisfaction, attract new or recover ridership, and make a difference in the communities it serves. So as you know, we've got, we've had various technology projects going on in the last decade. I won't read you the submission because it's kind of long and boring. But we've got new HR pay, HR finance payroll software going in right now. We've made changes to our website, changes to our platforms down at the Transit Center to show our buses coming in and out. We put up new signs for, to show the routes coming in, things like that. We've made a full load of APCs that we've added to our buses. We've just done a ton of technology changes over the last decade. So all different things, rider-facing, data reporting, employee-facing, things that we've done over the last decade. So I thought it was worthwhile to submit us for this award because we have put a lot of time, effort, investment into technology on all faces, whether it be customer, employee, internally, reporting, all of that. And so we were selected for that.
All right, good.
Awesome.
Commissioners, any questions on that? All right, thanks.
So we certainly got to get some pictures.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, for sure. So I'm sure Nate wants some pictures with everybody.
That's your boy.
Oh, you do.
Your boy.
Don't drop it.
It's not my award.
Trying to dress up today. I'm trying to dress up.
I just don't like to put fingerprints on stuff.
I'm starting to come here.
You in the middle?
Yeah, you should be in the middle with the big board.
No, get it. You guys get it. Gary, come on.
Oh, we got to get it changed.
You hold it right.
There you go. Get the fingerprints off.
Since you didn't dress up and I'm wearing a safety vest.
All right, smiles, please.
Please.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks.
Commissioners, get a bump in favor of that award?
You know he's on a fixed income.
All right, item 10, consolidation of HR policy updates, 4.7, staff recognition. Sunny?
Good afternoon, commissioners. There are two policy revisions in the board packet for today's approval. One is policy 4.7, staff recognition, specifically related to retirement recognition. We are revising that policy to include providing retired employees with a retired employee ID badge, which would then allow them to continue to ride Metro Bus service free of charge after separation from employment. And then the second policy is policy eight, holidays. This policy was revised to provide holiday pay for the hours equal to the number of hours an employee is regularly scheduled to work on a non-working holiday. So on the holidays that we are closed, we do have some staff that are scheduled 10 hours, something other than your traditional eight-hour day. And so on the days that the holiday falls when we are closed, if it happens to be an employee's 10-hour day, they would get holiday equal to that 10-hour shift. Any questions on either of those policies?
Commissioners, any questions?
On the first one, is there anything to call out in good standing?
Under our retired policy, I believe it says what qualifies as retired. I'm 99% sure of that.
I think it said if they resigned or something.
Yeah, I saw.
And then it refers to eligible for retirement benefits to start collecting.
Yeah, I saw a note there that kind of describes whether they retire or resign. I just didn't want us to have a disgruntled employee retire, not in good standing, and then riding for free.
Yep. Any other questions?
I'm just curious, is this for all employees? Or, I mean, in regards to working in the office and the drivers, all employees? Or is it specifically for the?
Which policy?
With the holiday pay?
It would be for any employees. So our operators, our dispatchers, and our street supervisors, they fall under our collective bargaining agreement. So we have to follow whatever language is in the collective bargaining agreement for each of those positions. This policy applies to all of our non-union positions, which can be, we have mechanics, our maintenance staff are non-union, as well as our office staff. So this would specifically pertain to the non-union staff.
So to align with what the union currently is getting?
Yep, so the union contracts right now, employees get paid equal to whatever their shift was on the day that we were closed, which also means that there are some operator shifts that might be less than eight hours on a particular day that were closed for the holiday, and those shifts have been paid out what they would have been scheduled. It's basically to keep people hold to what their schedules would have been had they continued to be at work. Yep.
All right, somebody want to move to approve those?
So moved. Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, passed unanimously. Item 11, consideration of fiscal year 2024 final audited financial statements. Amy?
Good afternoon, commissioners. In your board packet, you will find the 2024 final audited financial statements. Federal KDB presented in February. It was supposed to present in January, but the board meeting was canceled. So they presented the prelims in February. So they sent the final package, which you also have copies of on your desk. No major concerns were found. The only thing was they identified a material weakness, which is related to segregation of duty, based off of the number of staff that we currently have in front as the background.
All right.
And I pause for questions. If there are no questions, I need a motion to approve as presented.
Commissioners, your wishes?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, passed unanimously. Item 12, resolution 2025-02, Mindot authorizing resolution for calendar year 2026 dial-a-ride. You're up again.
You're up here a lot today.
It's budget season, so. In your packet also, you'll find the dial-a-ride resolution. This is part of our 2026 regular grant application. So we need to submit a resolution from our board approving that they will provide, Metro Bus will provide 20% of capital cost and 15% of total operating cost for each of the calendar year. It's a routine requirement for continuous funding with Mindot. So if there are no questions, I need a motion to approve as presented.
Just verifying the percentage share is constant year-over-year?
No, it's not constant year-over-year.
What was it last year?
5%. No, for Mindot provided 95%, and then we provided 5% local match. So for '26, '27, those.
15%?
15% from us, 85% from them.
Okay.
But the operating cost, sorry, the capital match is 80/20.
Yep. And that's consistent?
Yes.
Do you know what's driving the extra 10% onto us?
There was a legislation that happened.
Yeah, so Mindot, right after COVID, it's always been 80/20. And then just as a result of COVID, after COVID, Mindot, there was some legislative language three years ago that was passed for Greater Minnesota Transit Systems, so like Duluth, Rochester, the St. Cloud worlds. They made it reduce local share to help, because they had extra surplus of funds. So they just wanted to pass that on to the transit systems, essentially. So there was some legislative language that allowed them to allow us to only contribute only 5% basically local share. So that two years is up now. So now it's going back to the old way, which is what you have presented.
And the old way is the 15?
Yeah.
Anyone want to move to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, passed unanimously. Item 13, resolution 2025-03, Mindot authorizing resolution for calendar year 2026 fixed route.
So similar to dial-a-ride, same concept applies to the fixed route. Still standard application for the budget season, and we will need approval from the board. So I assume still the same questions. If there are no questions on this, I will make a motion to approve as well.
Commissioners, questions? Otherwise, I need a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, passed unanimously. Item 14, resolution 2025-04, authorization to purchase eight Class 400 CNG vehicles. You're still up.
In 2026, we are looking to purchase at least, for now, eight CNG buses. In order to do that, we will need a resolution from the board that goes with that application. So when Gary or Dave looks into that application, the resolution from the board is an attachment that is required to go with that application.
Did this get scaled back to five?
No, this is separate. So this is not part of the big 2020. This is the smaller buses.
Yeah.
Our memo says five.
Yeah.
Oh, yes, five buses, right? That's what we're doing for 2026. Yes, so the 2026 is.
Class 400 CNG vehicles?
Yes.
Five instead of eight?
Yep, five buses.
Okay. All right, somebody want to move to approve?
I'm motion to approve five buses.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, passed unanimously. Item 15, consideration of fiscal year 2026 budget proposal and tax levy.
The FY 2026 budget proposed levy is included in your packet. Highlights to that, the project memo includes the Metro Bus for plan, the Western Transit hub purchase, and then scheduled for vehicle replacements. For the tax levy, in 2029, our tax levy was at 3.6. Sorry, thank you. 2019, our tax levy was at 3.6%. 2025, it was at 2.92. And then for 2026, we are proposing 3.58% for the tax levy.
Commissioners, got any questions? Are you done?
Yes.
Okay.
I have a question. Is that an $800,000 increase in the levy?
Yes.
Can you tell me what that includes?
It doesn't break it down. So the way we have the tax levy spread out is every year, when we do operate in a capital project, we look at how much we need to make the budget whole. From conversations with the executive team, there was supposed to be a little bit of increase in 2023. So it's supposed to be like a slight increase every year to prepare us for 23 bus replacements, for the big purchases, and then the 400 bus replacement. But from the levy that was approved last year, there wasn't much that was approved. So setting us up so that we wouldn't fall behind for the 23 large buses that we need replaced, supposed to be in '26, but due to Mindot not having funding, we had an internal discussion to see if we'll spread the purchase of those buses, 7779, between 2027 through 2029. So we need a little bit of, it's all been coming up and going, I need 50 million. We're going to do like a slight increases to help us prepare for those capital purchases, so we don't get into a deficit. And also with these whole changes of Mindot providing us doing the local levy match of 15%, we need a little bit of increase to help us do what we're talking about now. A good budget.
And you're still putting money away in the capital improvement plan?
Yes.
Of 500,000?
Not, yes, something in that nature.
Is that what we did the year before? I think we've done that for a while, haven't we?
Yes, so we just carried that amount forward.
Okay. And where is the West?
Western Transit hub.
The West End, is that in there? Is that part of the levy increase too? And how much are we anticipating that to cost? And how much of that's going to be paid for through the federal government or state?
So right now, based off of what was approved, the land is purchased, and there's a $4 million operating capital to be used, 2 million estate bond. The federal is providing 80%, and we are providing 20% local match for the construction of the Western Transit hub.
Okay, so that would be included in levy then?
Yes.
Okay.
So that was approved in 20, what was that?
24.
24.
Okay. I just want it for us up here, but people listening or other people, kind of what, why is it up $800,000? And what's included in that?
So our total contribution on that build-out is 4 million? That's our match? Or our share?
For?
The Transit hub?
No, that's.
The West?
That's the total.
Is 4 million, and we owe 20% of that? Okay. And what do we have set aside? Do we have the total 20% set aside for that?
Yes.
Okay. I guess I go back to, I remember us having some of the conversations maybe four or five years ago now. But ARPA, we had gotten 7 million that we set aside for those future expenses. And I know our cash position is super healthy. I guess from my non-financial review. But what are we continuing to raise for?
So you're, as of right now, when you look at it, depending on what your cash flow was looked at, let's assume hypothetically, Mindot said, guess what? We have money to fund these 23 buses. One bus is coming in at about 600 and some change. We need 20% match local for that. Operating cash flow, you have your cash flow, and then you have your savings for the future. If, when I operate, I'd like to have at least six months' worth of cost in case if everything goes down, we will be able to pay employees. We still do have a retirement fund for that, a healthy part. So when I deep, deep, deep into that, I need a cash flow to pay for those buses. So let's say Gary puts an order, and then we get those 23 buses from New Flyer.
Yep.
I need 24 million to pay them hypothetically, if that's what it's going to cost. So from your local match, before I go to Mindot or go to the feds and go, I need reimbursement for this money, I need to show a check copy that our payment has been made. So we are on a reimbursement basis. So whatever we pay, we have to turn around and seek reimbursement. So even though we have a healthy cash flow, I'm not going to dip into it just to buy those buses, not knowing what is going to happen in the future.
So you're saying we need all that cash reserve simply to float a check until Mindot would pay us?
Not necessarily. So with Mindot's funding now, they tell you, so your budget might be, for example, 20 million. But based off of Mindot's format for funding, they may not have the whole 20 million to allocate to one person. So now you're using your local match to supplement those funds.
Sure.
Then when you go buy buses, they might come back and go, hey, tariff changed, this changed, this changed. Your rate is going to decrease. Whatever that difference is, Metro Bus is going to make up for that difference.
And we don't know that prior to ordering the bus?
We do, but it changes so often, like this tariff conversation. They could come back. We get, we constantly get updates from New Flyer, and they could come, like right now, we've got an order, and they can't even tell us what that's going to look like. They just have, they put things in their contract that say, on a minute's notice, we might get notified that it's a 4% increase. And either you can cancel your order, or you can absorb the 4% interest. I mean, there's just so many things that are moving constantly, especially in this day and age, that we just don't know about. And so we try to set ourselves up and prepare for many of these things that are coming out. It's like magically, a couple of months ago, we're at the TAC meeting, and they say, oh, guess what? We've got funding, the surplus funding of $8 million that we're going to allocate to all the different urban systems. We can move the five, these five buses that are allocated to 2027 up to 2026. Do you guys want to do it? And we have to jump on a minute's notice. Or they take these five buses, and they just put them back in the rotation, and you get put where you want to get put. And then those buses could either get replaced in '27. They might get pushed to '28. They might get pushed to 2029. So in some cases, we're forced to jump when they say jump. Otherwise, we might not get those buses till 2029 or 2030.
Yeah, and so that example is we would need the cash to, you know, against cover, to write the check.
To suddenly move those.
Until Mindot or whoever were to pay us. I guess I'm wondering, is there a better financial vehicle, if you will, than cash, that we'd be able to leverage for that short term?
Your other option is getting a loan, which you end up paying interest back on. So if we end up getting a loan to pay. So let's say if we get approved for these previous buses, and we don't have the funding for that. If I take out a loan, then we will be paying interest on whatever loan or bond we take out to finance those buses.
Yeah, I guess my ask to that is have we run that financial analysis to understand the value of that money of doing a short-term loan for that versus continuing to raise our levies to have cash on hand to do that? And then that cash essentially sets idle while we're not purchasing buses?
The cash doesn't sit idle when we're not purchasing. So once the period goes out, so I don't even get my levy till towards the end of the year. So I'm cash flowing from what I have previous until we get the levy money. We have to pay the operators. The 20% comes from us, comes from Mindot. Mindot only sends reimbursement every quarter. So if they are sending the reimbursement by match, I have to be on my drivers, July, February, match, till they get that funding. Then I turn around, put it back in my account, and then I still continue using that money to operate the finances of Metro Bus.
Okay. And I don't have the detail, but that's 7 million, the ARPA that we've set aside?
ARPA money is all done.
So we've spent down that 7 million?
We spent all that money. This is almost two, three years ago, if I remember correctly.
Yeah.
When the ARPA money was in there, what it did was, we do have federal pocket of money, our performance. So each year, we get an appointment. If we don't use it, we don't lose it. We roll it over to other projects that we need to do. The state, if you don't use it, you will lose that. So when it comes to funding, we try to get our state cash back, then save the federal funding for future expenses. So for the ARPA money during COVID relief, we use that money towards salaries. The last piece of it was about 300,000, which we just drew down. When we had the ARPA money, we did not charge, not stay. So whatever local match that our staff work have provided was paid using that COVID relief funds.
And so the other good part about this, you had asked about the Western Transit Center?
Yep.
Is that now that's allowed us to put us in a good position. Whereas if that, when they, when they put that feasibility study in together in 2019, they, based off the model, they kind of put together then the conceptual design that was kind of estimated at $4 million. And that's what we were able to get that bonding money off of. Let's just say at 2025 money, that comes in at 6 million or 7 million. It would allow us, based off of what we've been able to save and kind of that federal money, to then say, okay, well, we've got, still got that money sitting over here. It's not like we've lost that money, right? And so we're now able to step in and say, okay, we've got enough to fund that to be able to make that happen, rather than coming back and raising levy or pulling more money from there to be able to do that. So some of that's able to be used for that as well.
Need a motion for that?
I have a question.
Okay, yep.
I'm not quite done yet. I was just listing here. You said that you like to keep 50%, what'd you say, of our six months' worth of expenses? Would that be how much? 10, 10, 12 million?
Each.
Those for the year, it's about 20, 20 would be about 10, isn't it?
Ball pack of expenditures for the actual for 2024 was about 23 million. So if you do half of that, you want to hold that in reserve in case. Nobody is all going to retire today. If everybody decides to retire today, it comes out from that bucket of money.
Where is that cash held? Is it sitting in the money market then?
Yes.
What kind of rate is that at?
Well, 2024 looked good. So we got about close to half a million back for interest, which we go back, put in there to just reinvest the money.
Okay.
Don't let me touch it unless everybody else signs off, but yes.
Yes. What is the projected completion date for the new terminal? An operation, is that a couple of years? Or what are they looking at for the?
September of 2026.
2026, so next year, okay. And when you purchase these five buses, are you going to be going each year, purchasing five more buses? Or what is the?
Uh, still see, you have the packet? You'll have, you took the five-year outlook in your packet. It'll just show us kind of our plan.
Over the course of five years?
Yeah, so if you look at the bottom, it's got all of our buses there at the bottom.
Okay.
It's kind of hard to see, but that's kind of our plan for the, well, not kind of, but that's our plan for replacement. And that's all based on useful life schedule.
So even though we have it straight out this year, content 27, Mindot might go, hey, guess what? We have most of this money. Can we move five buses forward? And just like Dave mentioned, it's either we jump on it or we lose it.
I suppose over the course of that time, the buses may go up in costs because of costs, could be tariffs, other things as well.
All right, commissioners?
Sorry, following up on that, is there, I mean, it always sounds great of, hey, we've got $8 million left. Do you want new buses now? Is there any strategy put into, you know, elongating the cycle of the bus? Or hey, if we pull it ahead, you mentioned, hey, we'll pull some ahead now. What does that do to us longer term? Like, I can't imagine there's much value, whether the bus is two years old or five years old, it's lost most of its, if not all, its value. What does that do to our operating cost, I guess, into the future?
Maintenance costs go up significantly.
Holding the bus longer, it does.
That's a useful life.
But I guess if, I'll make up a scenario that, hey, you've got a, every four years, you're rotating buses, hypothetical. Mindot says, hey, you know what, this is a great year. Let's, let's get you new buses now. So now you move from a four-year cycle to a three-year cycle. And then next year, maybe you're two years from now, you move to a two-year cycle. What does that do to our overall?
Oh, that won't happen unless the opposite. It's not happening because we're already outside of our useful life.
Oh, you are?
Yeah.
Okay.
So basically, what it looks like is, so our small buses are on a seven-year, and our large buses are on a 12-year. Most of these buses that they're replacing are already on like a 14 or a 15.
Okay.
And they're saying, oh, guess what? We realize that we're already well behind that because of COVID, and that pushed us back. And they're saying, oh, guess what? Now, instead of you guys trying to push those buses out 16 or 17 years, we're going to get you on 14 years.
Good. So this gets us back to our plan?
Yeah. So what they do is they take this whole flurry of buses that all the systems have, and they do that, we do an annual ranking. And then they've got their whole list of where everybody falls. And based off their money that they have, they say, okay, we've got $8 million. That means we can replace 20 buses, let's just say. And they just go down that big master list, and they say, okay, you're, based off maintenance costs, based off this, based off years, ever, boom, let's pick 20. And that can mean that Metro Bus gets none. That can mean Metro Bus gets two. That means whatever. But yeah, it takes all of that into consideration. That means whatever. But yeah, it it takes all of that into consideration and they won't even replace it. If it's not outside of its useful life, if ours, because that means that probably 10 others or five other systems have buses that are well outside of their useful life.
Awesome. Thank you for that. The other item is at our last board meeting, we talked about having a closed session. I know schedules didn't allow for that. I would look for us or I would like us to have a closed session for the next meeting and I think we can do it just prior. I understand we're we're looking to approve the preliminary and we'd have time in June, if I'm not mistaken, is when you're seeking us to approve the
Final.
Final.
Next June board meeting.
And that way we can talk through some of the, some of the wage information that was shared with us.
Do you have a date on the meeting in June?
13, 12, Tuesday.
Seventeen.
Fifteen?
Seventeen.
Seventeen, okay, thanks.
So I'd make a motion to approve the preliminary simply to allow the the notifications and publications to occur with the expectation we'd have a closed session, board meeting prior to the regular scheduled board meeting.
Second that.
I think we skipped the head one, but, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ball is passed unanimously because 16 is set in the preliminary levy and tax property tax statement. So you just said that, so. All right, 17.
All right, sorry. Crossed out 15 early.
That's all right. 17, consideration of policy update, federal grant application and award management. You're still up.
We are doing a triennial this year and one of the follow up questions from reviewers was to include some two CFR 200 specific words into our financial management plan. So in Article 6.8, the grant management was really adding a little bit of wording to include in CFR 43 and 305.
Any questions, commissioners? Need a motion?
Second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Ball is passed unanimously. Item 18, consideration of award of A and E contract, Western Transit Center project Gary.
Yes, good afternoon, commissioners. It's pretty well documented that Metrobus is looking to build a second Western Transit Center in Wake Forest City of Wake Park. One of the first steps in that process is to look at hiring an architectural engineering firm to do the design work. We also are looking at this firm to manage all of the construction, do all the construction bidding and basically manage the entire project for us. You know, us as owners, we would provide input as as it goes as well. But Metrobus published a solicitation for a competitive solicitation for A and E back on February 10th of 2025. We, the objective again was to find somebody to, you know, be, provide turnkey services for this entire project. Metrobus received a total of four proposals that were due in the office of Metrobus on Monday, April 21st, 2025. We received four excellent proposals from some very qualified firms. Our project team took a lot of time through the proposals, doing evaluations, scoring. We narrowed the list to three and then we decided to do personal interviews with those three firms. Once that process was completed, we also did reference checks and was determined by our team to award this project to Ortel Architects out of St. Paul, Minnesota. Ortel has partnered with SRF Consulting, who was the lead firm and overseeing our feasibility study, facility feasibility study back in 2019. And actually it was Ortel and SRF, they were instrumental in selecting this property that we're looking, Wake Park that we're looking to build on. So they've got a great partnership as well. Ortel completed preliminary Western Transit Hub design for us during that feasibility study. So they have some working knowledge of what we're trying to accomplish here with this project. They've also been, have a dependable history with Wake Park. They were the prime architect on the amphitheater project, the
Public Works.
Public Works facility as well, I guess. Thank you. So so they have a lot of working knowledge with the folks there in in the city. Ortel's assembled a great group of sub consultants to work with them, SRF being one of them. So we have a lot of confidence in everybody that they have assigned to work with us on this project. This project requires a very aggressive timeline. As Dave indicated, production or excuse me, a construction completion date is scheduled for September, October roughly of 2026. Doesn't give people a lot of time, so we, being on schedule, staying on schedule is going to be very important through this process. Ortel and SRF, they have a lengthy history of working together. They're well versed in the state, federal and policies, guidelines, and that'll be required as part of this project. So unless there are any questions, we're asking for approval about war to award this contract to Ortel Architects.
I have a question, a couple of them. Ortel, what is the cost for, to hire them to do this?
Their firm fee is, I have it down here.
I can see it.
Seven, it was seven, 798 and change.
Okay. And then who are the other bidders?
SEH, Bloom, Dehabs and designed by Mellow.
Okay.
Any other questions? Otherwise, I need a motion to approve the contract for Western Transit Center to Ortel.
Some motion, I just had a quick question.
Yep. I got a motion, is there a second?
Did I motion or who's
I need a motion. I got a motion.
Okay, I'll second it.
Now a discussion.
Just had a quick question. Was there, there was no local firms that had the ability to take on this project?
SEH.
SEH is local.
Oh, it is?
Yeah. And they're partnered with Design Tree, Braun InterTech. You know, Design Tree has actually an office just down the street on Franklin Avenue here, Avenue, just beyond the Humane Society and that business mall or whatever you want to call it. Down, down, going next to the storage, public storage place, garage place, so.
All right, you got a motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, passed unanimously. Gary, you're still up, procurement update.
Still up. You guys stole a lot of my thunder here with your questions on procurement update. Hopefully I can expand on some of that. I'll try not to be too long. I've got a little bit of updates here. A lot of procurement projects on the docket or projects in general, capital projects here for Metrobus for this given fiscal year. We talked about buses and New Flyer. We have purchase order in for four additional large buses from New Flyer. Production, a pre-production meeting was held on March 26th of this year. Estimated line entry for those four buses is October 20th of 2025. So looking forward to getting those built. These buses will do away with the remaining diesel fleet that we have in our fixed route. So we'll be 100% CNG across the board in our, in all of our pair transit and fixed route bus fleet once these four buses are built. We talked about price. Current purchase price for these buses is coming in at 690,648.09, which is the highest we've ever seen. Now, they talked about tariffs. So we've had extensive conversations with New Flyer about the possibility of, you know, what are tariffs going to bring to this? They don't know. New Flyer is still doing their own research to see how tariffs are going to impact their pricing and their supply chain. They've talked about anywhere from a possible 2% to 4% increase by the time we go into production in October. But the positive is a lot of the supply chain that was purchased for bus fleets that will be built during this timeframe has already been a coming for. So we may not see increases at all or possibly at a minimal amount, but it's something we're watching. Regardless, I think it's going to push these buses well over 700,000 in cost. Which is pretty significant for Metrobus. We haven't seen that, those kind of numbers historically. You know, part of this too is, is we're, you know, if if increased costs do come down the pike, it's not something we're just going to accept. I mean, we're buying these buses off a contract that we're part of a consortium contract for heavy duty buses through the Duluth Transit Authority. They hold it as a contract holder, but St. Cloud participates in that contract. And if New Flyer does come along and say, you know what? We have to enact, we have tariff price increases, we have to enact price increases on these vehicles. They have to justify it. So they have to put together a force majeure justification for that price increase. That'll have to be run through the Federal Transit Administration for their approval as well. So it's not just an acceptance of that cost, but there's going to be a process in order to have that carried out. So hopefully, again, we won't have to deal with that, but it's something that's, it's the world we live in now and this whole market has been really, really volatile as far as any type of new purchases and new materials and supplies. Metrobus this past year sold three older diesel buses. We received, we published them on a public auction site, a national public auction site. We got anywhere from a thousand to 1,400 for the three. I think one of them was a thousand dollars and the top was 1,400. So market, not great on used buses. The real selling point of these vehicles were the engines, diesel engines. Cummins engine can be reused in other, other areas outside of train, on public transportation. But these buses were 18 years old, so they were well beyond their service life. They, it was kind of questionable if they were even service ready anymore. The buses were purchased by a recycler and so they were, they're not going to be put back into service. Basically, they were purchased for the engines and then they'd be parted out from that point on. So it'll be interesting to see going forward what kind of market we see for CNG, you know, once we start retiring that type, that fleet. We talked about the tariffs. Metrobus, basically what we told New Flyer and we made a decision internally, we'll comply with whatever mandates we're required to and what comes down the pike with that for this stuff. Any regards of that, those type of cost increases? Dollar ride buses, we recently completed delivery of eight class 400 cutaway buses. Five of those were from 2020, so that's how long it took to receive those buses. COVID really delayed that process quite, quite a bit. And the other three were from 2022, so we were waiting a long time to replace buses. And we talked about useful life. These are a seven year duty cycle bus. They were actually 13 years old at sale and we actually have one of our maintenance staff have hit, put his leg right through the floor on one of these buses one day. So that's how bad they're, they deteriorated during that time period. So it's very difficult to carry them beyond the seven year duty cycle. Once these buses reach that duty cycle, they're pretty much no longer service ready. So we do what we can. We talk about maintenance costs. We do what we can to keep them, keep them in service, but you know, it's pretty difficult to do. These buses were sold for scrap. We got a thousand dollars each, which we were actually very happy with. We talked to a couple of different recyclers, the local one here on Lincoln. They offered us zero for those buses. So they said they'll take them off our hands. And actually, we would, we would have had to pay to remove all the fluids and get them ready for for scrap. So we'll take the thousand dollars and go with that one. Again, this is going to be a tougher resale market for CNG. These were diesel buses, so they were looking at the engines. You know, that's the primary selling point for recycling on a bus like this or buses like that. Going forward, we have no idea if there's going to be a market for resale for any of these. We have a purchase order that we put in for eight additional dollar ride buses for 2024. Those buses began production on March 24th. As of today, eight of those buses are currently online. We've been holding weekly production meetings with Arbock. That's the type of bus they are. That's where they're being built. Actually, Mike Reed, our maintenance manager, and Dale Abraham, one of our main supervisors are at Arbock this week. They're doing the initial inspection on the first bus. Things have been going much smoother during this bus build. We had a lot of problems during the last one. We talked about the delays. Some of it was market driven, some was manufacturing driven, some was poor quality driven. So we're trying to improve in those areas going forward. With that said, we had issues with buses being painted wrong with the last bus order. And as luck would have it, the first three buses that were painted on this bus order were painted wrong again. So that's currently being corrected. So those are some of the challenges we run into when we deal with stuff like this. So these, the cost of these buses are currently at 316, 853. We actually tend to see that number come down a little bit, but that's a ridiculous cost for a small cutaway vehicle. Base cost for a cutaway bus is for a high floor, not a low floor, is roughly under a hundred thousand dollars, right, or a hundred thousand? So there's a premium that we pay to run the four buses for EDA customers. We also had issued a purchase order for six additional replacement buses, pair transit buses. They will go online sometime in early 2026. And on a positive note with those, we were able to get those under the old, our older current contract that the state of Minnesota had for small buses. So we won't see that significant price increases on those buses like we will with the subsequent subsequent contract that's currently under negotiations. That contract was due, or they're currently under review on that, excuse me. And they're hoping to award sometime in June, but they are indicating, or Mindot has indicated that they've, they're seeing significant price increases on on those vehicles. So we talked about levy costs and, you know, the unknowns. This is kind of what we're referring to. And, you know, again, you know, you can look at our CIP and we have five buses due for replacement this year, five the next year, six the next year, whatever. We don't know from year to year what that's all going to involve. So you know, if part of the issue for us is, you know, yeah, we can accept the money from Mindot, but do we have a 20% local match, you know, to to meet that? So that's the biggest challenge for us. CNG upgrade project, our compressed natural gas. Since our fleet is now pretty much 100% compressed natural gas, we want to make sure that we're able to keep fueling operations running at a consistent level. So when we initially built the CNG station or our CNG system, there was an additional, we're running off of two compressors right now. We had in the plan to add a third compressor somewhere down the road and that third compressor will basically be like a backup. There'll be additional CNG storage tanks that'll be included with that. So you know, we can keep those tanks full if we ever have a full system shutdown or whatever. At least we've got some backup. Or we should be able to fuel most, if not all, of the fleet and at least keep our operation, our service running. So that's going to be an important piece, a component for Metrobus. All the underground conduit, natural gas line, motor starter, all of the infrastructure was already put in place as part of the original project. So basically, we're, we're purchasing a whole new compressor with storage tanks and putting that in place. This thing comes in one unit, probably the width of this room right here. So the challenge is going to be getting into, getting it into that compressor compound. We've since put a roof over that, that facility. We fenced it in, so we may end up having to tear the thing apart just to get the compressor in, but I think it's going to be well worth it going down the road. In addition to that, we're looking at putting some heat in our fuel island out front here. Subzero weather is a huge detriment to our fueling operations. It's almost a failure every time we drop below zero. We're looking at putting some infrared heating to be placed right over our pumps, our CNG fuel pumps. That'll serve two purposes. It'll help a little bit for our fuelers standing out there in subzero weather, fueling at the nighttime or in the nighttime. And then also to keep the pumps a little warmer to keep some of that that freezing and some of the issues that we've had to deal with. So so we're counting on that to be another good investment for Metrobus. Team of engineers was here back in March to do a preliminary site, site study. Equipment's been ordered. The project's slated to begin in August. So that one's going to be up and running soon. We talked about the Western Transit Center. Solicitation was posted, awarded. We went through, you know, a pretty lengthy process of putting this together, doing our evaluations. I think we made an excellent choice with Ortel Architects. I personally did reference checks on them and they've done a lot of public, public works, public facility, whether it be transit hubs, transit hub improvements, things like that. They're, they're well versed in public transit as well as, as city work. So I think they are going to do a fine job for us. They bring a lot of experience and a lot of talent with them. They brought a big team here for their interview. They came here to win the project and and they certainly made a good impression on our, on our team during that, that interview process. We have our triennial review with the FTA next week. That usually involves requires heavy involvement by procurement. A lot of documentation, but the entire team's been put together for that, that review. We're hoping that goes well for us and that we come through with zero findings again this, this three year period. We have a liability and workers' compensation insurance contract, the We have a liability and workers' compensation insurance contract that expires at the end of this fiscal year. So we'll be looking to go out for competitive bid on that and we'll be soliciting proposals from firms for that service as well. Just wanted to mention Jefferson Lines, if you guys are familiar with them, they've been hovering out of our transit center since I think 2009. And they have recently reduced the size of their fleet. So rather than have their big coach buses hovering out of the transit center, they have a couple of cutaway vans or vehicles similar, similar to our paratransit buses. And they actually are downtown transit center is their initial starting point now for service on a daily basis. So they came, approached Metro Bus, asked if, you know, they could store their buses here or park their buses here. So we actually signed a lease with them. They're giving us $500 a month to store a couple buses here. So that actually was a pretty good win for Metro Bus. Additional projects, we'll be looking at replacing our finance software. The current system has been very unreliable, a bit cumbersome to use. As Nene can attest to, she does a lot of manual work in putting together financial reports and, and spreadsheets for, for different entities in order to meet the requirements. So we're going to be looking at the possibility of, of replacing that. Mindot has a consultant that they've contracted with and we're going to be working with that consultant to help us find potential software providers to replace that, our current system. I think that's going to be the end of the list here, so I apologize if I was a little long. A lot of going on in Metro Bus.
All right, thanks Gary.
Sure.
Yep.
I have some questions. Gary, you have a list of questions here?
Absolutely.
You're going, yeah, no kidding. You said you're looking at heating the station out here?
Yes.
Pumping station. Do you have a cost on that?
Uh, yeah, that's roughly, was that a couple, a couple hundred thousand, I believe.
Okay. And then the cost on
That will be CNG, so we're going to plumb right into our CNG line.
Okay. Okay. The cost on the additional CNG storage you talked about, kind of the backup, what's the cost on that?
That came in at 1.8.
Okay.
That, actually that's a total project. So that heat and the storage, the backup compressor and the storage tanks are 1.8. That's the entire project.
So you do it all at the same time?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, you know, we haven't seen this for a while, but when we bought the CNG buses, you guys did a comparison on CNG compared to diesel?
Yep.
Have you, do you guys look at that at all going forward?
Yeah.
I mean, diesel, the cost has been all over the place, but so has natural gas.
Yeah.
Are we still ahead or is it break even now?
It's close.
That's what I thought.
It's very close. Actually, the cost of diesel has dropped pretty significantly, but CNG is still a better option.
Okay.
Not by a lot, so.
Is it, do we get more, how should I say this? Is it less maintenance on the CNG buses compared to diesel?
I wish Mike were here to answer that. Yeah, it's, it's significant.
Okay. I'm just looking at, at some point, you know, I want to go back to diesel, but if it's cost effective, who knows?
Well, we've got, we've got 40 years on this infrastructure, otherwise we'll pay it back.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Oh, I see what you mean. Okay.
And I believe we're still receiving tax rebates on the CNG.
Right.
So we're, we're well ahead of it.
Okay. And then what are the other transit systems buying? Are they buying diesel or are they buying CNGs? What are they buying?
Well, here in Minnesota, still the systems similar to us are still buying diesel primarily.
They are.
I know Duluth has a few electric buses.
I heard they didn't work real well.
Not real well. Next results there.
I heard they were parked in the garage, actually.
For most of the winter months, yes.
I'd be a hard sell on those. And in this, for Nene, with what we just heard on the cost of new buses, large and small, are you adjusting the budget, what we're putting away for the next time we go around?
I would not.
Seven or 14 years from now?
No.
In Sacra Rapids, we adjusted a lot of our stuff to reflect these needs as we did our capital equipment plan, our capital improvement plans, and it made a significant difference. Again, that's pie in the sky if you look out 20 years, who knows in 20 years, but at least we're putting some money away. Our fire truck we bought together with Sartell, we bought our own, but it was 1.4 million. That same truck is almost, what, 2.2 now?
Yeah.
Something like that?
Well, you're speaking music garden.
That's only three years.
That's, we liked it. I mean, you're speaking music garden.
Yeah.
And, you know, that's why we, we like being able to participate, buy the small buses off the state contract. You know, we get, you know, consortium pricing or aggregate pricing as a result of that. And then the same with the Duluth contract. Duluth was on the fence as to whether or not they wanted to continue with that contract. It's a lot of work, but we believe that the payoff of keeping pricing lower or getting that aggregate cost is as well worth the effort, so.
And one of the things that Gary spoke to of pushing that that contract, was it the end of May, if I remember right? Or was it the end of March?
Which one are you talking about?
The one where it was ending and then they were waiting on the, I forget dates, anyway. It was the end of the month that that contract ended and then they were vetting the new contract and it was going to be however many months. And we were pushing and pushing and pushing, saying, we're ready to go. Why can't you just award now so that we can buy under the new contract? And finally they agreed to it and pushed that through. And so we ended up saving about close to $300,000. Well, to me it was a no brainer. Let's, let's get it underneath the, the old contract. This is going to be two months down the road and going to cost us that much more. Let's do it under this and save that money. So we, we like to do things like that. I mean, why not save money? Of course we have to do that. It's a no brainer.
More for that.
We do what we can.
Yeah, no, I know.
And this market's difficult. You know, I talked about the cost of a low floor bus, but there's only one manufacturer in the entire country and the large buses, there's two. So it's tough.
I'm going to have you.
All right.
That's the end of my interrogation now.
Human Resources, Sonny, you're up.
All right, I'm going to go quick.
Are you? You're not ready?
I'm warming up.
Thank you, Sonny.
Just a couple of statistics as far as our attrition rate goes in fiscal year 2024, we were at about 21% year to date and annual is out for fiscal year 2025, we're at about 15%. So we're going in the right direction as far as turnover goes. Recruitment, we currently have 12 full-time fixed route operators. However, we're only actively filling four of those. We've been kind of holding eight vacancies pending implementation of our Metro Bus Forward Initiative and the change in service and routes. So that we're making sure we're putting the right positions, putting the right positions into our budget rather than hiring the wrong positions. So eight of them we are holding. We have one part-time fixed route operator, we have two full-time Dallara operators, one full-time mechanic and one full-time facilities worker. We are, or I have been trying to prepare for the implementation of the Minnesota Paid Family Medical Leave. Still kind of looking at the pros and cons of going with the state plan versus a private plan. I think that likely the state plan is going to be cheaper, but will be much more administratively But I'm still collecting that data. I am estimating a cost using the state calculator tool of between 33,000 to 47,000 per year. That's based off of total payroll. In the first, in fiscal year 2020, or actually calendar year 2026, we will only have to pay two years, or two quarters worth in fiscal year 26. So that kind of helps us in, you know, slow going the cost into our budget. We are required, or the contribution rate is 0.88% of taxable wages up to the social security wage cap and the employer has to, has to contribute 50% of that and the employee can contribute the other 50%. Employers can obviously contribute more, but we have to do 50%. Gary mentioned the triennial review. I kind of act as the person that coordinates and makes sure all of our data gets to our reviewer. Right now, we've just got some last documentation that needs to be uploaded for our reviewer by the end of the day tomorrow and then he will be onsite next Wednesday and Thursday to go through any questions with documentation. And hopefully, like Gary said, will come out.
No findings.
Like roses, yeah, no findings.
This happened three years ago.
Yep. As far as UKG implementation goes, we have postponed the implementation of that right now. Tend to go live is July. Some of the reasons for that is because our accrual calculations haven't been working correctly, so we're working through the setup of the accruals. Some of the taxes haven't been working correctly on the payroll side. And then we're still trying to go through a couple of parallel payrolls with accurate setup before we go live. So like I said, we're tentatively scheduled to go live July of '25. We have done basic training for all of our employees as far as how to log in, how to access, what general information they will have access to, the things that they'll be able to make changes to directly regarding their own personal information. And then our non-union employees are already using it to track their time. Once we go live with UKG, non-union will be doing all timekeeping in UKG. And then Gary mentioned our five-year contract is up with our insurance broker. That's for work comp, property and casualty liability and our ancillary benefits, our voluntary benefits. Just something, you know, every five years we like to go out to, to bid just to make sure that we're getting the best deal that we can. So that our people will go out midsummer. That's all I got for you.
All right. Any other business?
I have a question. Sorry. Which areas are we seeing the highest turnover in?
Operators.
Really? Okay. I lost the bet on that one. Thanks.
All right. Nothing else, we are adjourned at 5:01.